And we do have a forum, so I will call this meeting to order. I wanted to recognize that we have two new board members tonight. It's their first board meeting, so welcome to Elegant Man and welcome to Cheryl Berry, who are just starting their terms tonight. We have another new board member that is out of the country, and she will be at our next board meeting, Jen Huvi. So welcome to the Edina School Board. We appreciate your service here. Our first order of agenda tonight is approving our agenda. Unfortunately, we are going to have to reschedule our presentation from Intermediate District 287 due to illness, so that presentation will no longer be part of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting with the presentation removal?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely. So we are going to move into hearing from members of the public. As you said, unfortunately, Marcy Dowd is not able to be here due to illness. And we have consent agenda, we have discussion items for our Legislative Action Committee platform. We have information about social studies, we have new curriculum standards that are coming through, and we're looking at courses. We have international travel recommendations. We will hear about our fiscal year 2025 cost containment recommendation for action. We are having Legislative Action Platform approval. We have secondary courses that are coming through that we will have for approval, and then we have several policies that we have, and then we will have committee and leadership updates.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. And before we get to community comments, we have our excellence in action section. And tonight, we are excited to formally recognize our three outgoing board members, or they actually are no longer part of the board, Julie Green, Janie Shaw, Regina Neville, who are in the audience tonight. We have an item that went through consent last month that we would like to read about each of you, and then we have a plaque that we would like to give each of you. So what I'm going to do is read your recognition, and then if you could come up, we would like to formally present your plaque to you. And so we will go in alphabetical order, so I would like to start with Julie Green. This is your commendation, Julie. Be it resolved that the school board commends and recognizes Julie Green for her service on the Edina School Board from January 2020 through December 2023. The board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and that of the staff and residents of the school district for Julie Green's four years of devoted service to the Edina Public Schools and its affairs during the period 2020 through 2023. Julie Green has served the district in many different capacities, both on the board and off. Throughout her tenure, Julie demonstrated strong leadership, notably as the head of the Legislative Action Committee, where she championed our district's interest at the state level. Her commitment to staying informed on legislative matters and advocating for policies that benefit our students and educators has been invaluable. Julie Green served as Board Vice Chair for the past year and a half, and as a member of the Governance Committee for the past two years. She also served as the Chair of the District's Policy Committee, showcasing her keen understanding of the details that govern our educational system. She also served as Board Liaison to many organizations. These have included the Student Activities Advisory Committee, the Edina Education Fund, and the Parent Leadership Council. Additionally, she has been the Board Liaison to several of our schools during her tenure on the board. Beyond her formal responsibilities, Vice Chair Green has consistently demonstrated a passion for education and a genuine concern for the well-being of our students. Julie was involved in many critical decisions for Edina Public Schools, including hiring Superintendent Stanley, developing the district's most recent strategic plan, and navigating the district's COVID-19 pandemic response. Her advocacy for educational excellence, equity, and inclusivity has left a lasting impact on our community. The board members congratulate Julie Green and extend a collective and individual thank you for a job well done. Julie? Oh, hi. You're right there.
It has just been an honor to serve the community alongside of you. You came in at a really tough time, just before the pandemic started, and you have worked tirelessly for the community around advocacy for funding, around advocacy around policies that better serve our district. So we are just very proud, very sad to lose you, but we're very proud of you, and just thank you for stepping up and serving the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am going to read the commendation for Regina Neville. Be it resolved that the school board commend and recognize Regina Neville for her service on the Edina School Board from November 2022 through December 2023. It is with great pleasure and deep gratitude that we extend this commendation to Regina Neville on behalf of the board, staff, students, and residents of the school district. Regina stepped forward to run in a special election, filling a one-year vacancy on the school board, and has served the Edina Public Schools community with exceptional dedication and commitment. While Regina's service to this board was to fulfill a one-year vacancy, Regina deserves to be recognized for her 13 years of consecutive service to our school district, serving on our school board from 2010 to 2017, as well as representing our school district as Edina's Board Representative for Intermediate District 287 from the years of 2013 to 2022, where she also served as Board Chair for two years. Regina Neville is a community-minded individual who consistently brings a genuine passion for the well-being of our students and the betterment of our schools to her work. Her commitment to equity and a student-centered approach in decision-making has left an indelible mark on the board's initiatives. One of Regina's standout qualities is her historical knowledge about the district, which has proven to be an invaluable asset in shaping informed and thoughtful board decisions. Her pragmatic, welcoming, and collaborative spirit have contributed significantly to the positive dynamics of our board. As Regina Neville concludes her term on the Edina School Board, we extend our heartfelt thanks for her exemplary service on the board and throughout the district, and wish her continued success in her future endeavors. Her legacy of dedication and impact will endure, serving as an inspiration for future leaders within our district. The board members congratulate Regina Neville and extend a collective and individual thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Regina, Karen shared, I mean, you not just one time, but you twice stepped up to serve your community. We are so grateful for that. Because of your leadership, we have integrated the work around equity into our policies at a level that has never been integrated before. We are just grateful for all of your work on 287, to really recognize our students who have served in 287, and that you continue to do that even when you weren't serving on the board. So thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve alongside of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we would like to commend Janie Shaw. Be it resolved that the school board commend and recognize Janie Shaw for her service on the Edina School Board from January 2020 through December 2023. The board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and that of the staff and residents of the school board for Janie Shaw's four years of devoted service to the Edina Public Schools and its affairs during the period 2020 through 2023. Janie Shaw has served the district in many different capacities. Through her tenure on the board, Janie has exemplified unwavering commitment in various crucial roles. Her contributions as Board Treasurer and Board Clerk have enriched the board's operations and positively impacted the entire school community. Janie also served on many different board committees during her tenure on the board: Finance and Facilities, Teaching and Learning, Legislative Action Committee, and Governance. This truly showcases her willingness to serve where needed and lent her leadership to a broad array of positions. She has also served as Board Liaison to many organizations. These include, but are not limited to, the Talent Development Committee, the City of Edina, Edina Public Schools Partnership Committee, and the Special Services Advisory Committee. Additionally, she has been the Board Liaison to several of our schools during her tenure on the board. Beyond her official responsibilities, Board Member Shaw has consistently demonstrated a passion for making sure each and every student is able to discover their possibilities and thrive. During her time on the board, Janie was involved in many critical decisions for Edina Public Schools, including hiring Superintendent Stanley, developing the district's most recent strategic plan, and navigating the district's COVID-19 pandemic response. Her exceptional service, unwavering dedication, and lasting contributions have led to the betterment of Edina Public Schools. The board members congratulate Janie Shaw and extend a collective and individual thank you for a job well done. Thank you.
Janie, you too started at the onset of the pandemic, and I just appreciate you truly striving for excellence for each and every student and pushing us to think differently, really pushing us on strategy A with academics to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all students. It has been such an honor to just learn from you, quite honestly, and stand alongside of you, and we can't thank you enough for all of your contributions to all the students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for your service. We really appreciate all three of you, and thank you for coming tonight. We are going to move on to our hearing from members of the public. Good evening, and thank you all for being here tonight. Everyone here on the board and our district leadership team value input from the public, and we appreciate those who have taken the time out of their busy lives to come and speak to us tonight. In order for our community comment agenda item to serve all, including the public that is here to speak, it is important that individuals understand the process tonight and our expectations of those at the podium and in the audience. When you signed in and asked to speak, you acknowledged an understanding and adherence to Board Policy 206, which are community comment guidelines. Pursuant to this policy, each speaker has a maximum of three minutes to speak. When those three minutes are up, you must conclude your remarks. If you do not wrap up quickly, I will ask you to stop. If you continue to speak, you will be ruled out of order and potentially asked to leave the boardroom. This time is not designated to address items concerning specific staff or students, and personal attacks by anyone at the podium are unacceptable. If this happens, you will be warned, and if you persist, you will no longer be able to continue your remarks. Any feedback about district employees need to go to their respective site-level leader, the superintendent, or be submitted to the board in writing. We ask that all audience members listen attentively, but do not interrupt, applaud, or disrupt the meeting in any way. It is important to us that the space continues to be one of order, inclusion, and respect, and we are responsible for doing our part to maintain that environment. While the public comment period during a board meeting is an important function and serves as a vehicle for our board and community to hear stakeholder concerns, our board is also here to accomplish the important work of the district. Board Policy 203 provides guidance for how our board meetings will operate and states that our regular board meetings must be in by 10:00 p.m. As such, if there are an excessive number of community comments that can potentially prohibit board work from getting done in a timely manner, there is a chance a board member will make a motion to limit the amount of time community comments will be. All efforts will be made to ensure all viewpoints are expressed. Multiple individuals expressing the same viewpoint or multiple people from the same organization should consider consolidating their remarks. Finally, during the public comment period, our role as a board is to listen, but this is not a place for the board to resolve any concerns, and as such, no comments will be made from the board. Issues will be potentially referred to the superintendent for appropriate follow-up. Thank you for your cooperation. Our first speaker tonight is Sarah Quail.
Hello. Can you guys hear me? It'll be green.
It should be green when it works.
No, green. I promise I know how to turn on the lights.
I wonder if the battery is not.
Push the mic and phone in a little bit. Sometimes at the base, sometimes that's...
Our battery might be out.
I can speak loud. No, no. Michael, is that one at the end, or does that one not have the battery?
Yeah.
First, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak today. I first want to introduce myself. I then want to give some recognition to the board, the board members today, and the board members of past. And then I also want to recall my experience at our last board meeting and ask for maybe some changes moving forward. So first, my name is Sarah Quail. I am a resident of Edina. I have three children. I have had the honor of putting them through four Edina schools, so I've got the whole range, elementary to high school. And I have to say what a tremendous experience it's been. We, like many other people in the Edina residents in this room, moved here for the schools and for the opportunities that you provide our students every single day. And I have watched each of my kids flourish and thrive through the experience. I also am, so as you might know, I'm also the administrator for the Edina Moms Group. And so that is kind of my third job. And with that, there are many voices that I'm also here to represent, and so I want to make sure that that's noted as well. So, recognition. You guys are amazing. You have been able to take us through a pandemic and social unrest, and I just want to say how much I appreciate all of the efforts that you have taken to make sure that our kids are safe, they are loved, they are educated, they thrive. And I just want to really recognize each of you. I want to recognize the board members that were in the past as well. I know what a tough job this is that you guys do, and I want to make sure that you know that you have a community that supports you completely and thoroughly. So I was here during the last board meeting, and I will say I completely support free speech. I think that everyone has a right to speak their mind. I know that there is a lot of passion in the room, and I know there was a lot of passion in the room there. However, things were out of hand. We were not able to continue the meeting. You, as board members, weren't able to do the important work that you do. The distraction and the chaos that ensued at this meeting hurts my children, and it hurts all of our children. And so I am glad that I'm able to speak first, because I implore everyone in this room to be kind, to be collaborative, to be respectful to this board. They do tremendous hard work for our community, and we should honor that, and we should honor the ability that we have to speak here. It is not a given that they come and they let us all come here and speak today. This is an honor and a privilege that we're able to do so. So I truly hope that everyone that comes after me takes a deep breath and that makes sure that we do not get into the spot that we were last time, because last time we weren't able to continue. Can you wrap up, please?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you. So with that, I want to say thank you again, and just appreciate each of you, and thank you for letting me speak. Thank you. Erin Gable?
I knew before to my...
We have to have a form if you want to speak.
I have the form.
Your...
The only thing I'll say before she speaks for me is that the only thing I'll say before she speaks for me... she speaks for me is that I see here on the agenda you have a social studies guiding change. Given that it's not specific as to what you are addressing, I also expect that the comments made tonight from people who, we all know who we are all are here, are respected because if we're going to talk about it, this does have everything to do with education, especially Western education, and it's how it's deeply flawed. Ask yourselves why we learn extensively about the Holocaust, as we should, but we don't learn anything about the Nakba of 1948, or anything preceding that, preceding that, or succeeding that. So I just ask that you all also have the same respect for my friends and family here to listen to them.
Thank you, Ms. Gable. Teri Krib.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Teri Krib, as you said, and while I was not here at the last meeting, I felt compelled that I needed to be here because of everything that Sarah had expressed. And, one, I did want to express my gratitude because the job you all have volunteered to do is extremely difficult. As a Jewish woman and mother of two Jewish students in the school, in Edina schools, before October 7th occurred, I mean, more of my son, who's the older one, he, antisemitism is the never-ending, it's never-ending, it's existed from time immemorial, and it's just part of the fabric of some people's lives and how they're raised, and it comes up in little ways, little, but big enough to be felt. And so I am appreciative and I believe also in the freedom of speech of everyone, but oftentimes DEI policies don't embrace that of Jews. They embrace every other religion, creed, but oftentimes it's Jews that are somehow left out. So I just want to thank Edina, the board, for acknowledging, maybe, I'm not saying the board has specifically done, acknowledged something, so please bear with me, but just having a community, Dr. Stanley, and a statement that is embracing of Jews as well as those who are not, because it's oftentimes not, it's not part of the communication, and it's just something, communication well beyond Edina, just worldwide. So with that, I don't have anything left to say other than thank you for your work, and let's hope it's a calm meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Krib. Isaac Stutz.
My name is Isaac Stutz. I'm a member of the Minnesota Immigrant Rights Action Committee, but more importantly, I'm addressing you today as a Minneapolis high school student. I'm here to express mine and my fellow MPS students' full and unwavering solidarity with the three Edina, or four Edina students who are recently suspended over the chant "From the River to the Sea." We also condemn, in the strongest terms, this act of outright censorship. It is disturbing that this district chose to take punitive action against students who are protesting a genocide. As of now, over 22,000 Palestinians have been murdered in the Gaza Strip alone, the majority of which are children. You can see the images and videos for yourself on nearly every social media site as neighborhoods with homes, apartments, mosques, bakeries, churches, hospitals are leveled, neighborhoods with people still inside. There is no excuse for censoring opposition to something so horrific. There is no excuse for the precedent this sets for the political repression of students. I'm coming to you as a Minneapolis student to tell you that this doesn't end at the temporary suspension of three students. It indeed sets a precedent for censoring the political speech of students everywhere. It creates an atmosphere in which students are scared to speak out against the war crimes that are being committed with the active military and economic support of our government, because the severity of consequences eliminates countless future opportunities for them. We've also faced censorship in Minneapolis, but the precedent this sets, suspension for a chant, is a punch in the face to any lesson about not being a bystander or stepping in when you see injustice that our schools have pretended to teach us. History goes on, and you all need to consider which side you are on, those who stamp out opposition to active genocide, or those who fight to end such genocide. Thank you.
I'd like to echo many of the same things Sarah said earlier. I really appreciate all of your service. I know you work countless hours here, and it cannot be easy. My name is Maria Leux. I've lived 20 years in Edina. I have three children in Edina schools, and I have volunteered many, many hours inside of Edina schools. I've also been at quite a few school board meetings. I've seen the public comment. I've definitely seen people who were maybe unhappy with something of the schools and how they've tried to express that. I will say I was at the school board meeting in December. I will, it was something I have never experienced before. The room here was taken over by pro-Palestine protesters, and for a while, the meeting was at recess, at which point I would say that the environment was both chaotic and frightening. We had speakers slamming their hands on the table, people were chanting, running up and down here. I honestly was wondering if I should just leave, if I was in danger, given how people were acting.
Please be respectful to our speaker.
I will, when the meeting was adjourned, I exited with a handful of other people. I said, I never said anything to anyone at this meeting. We had a child with us. People yelled shame into our faces, and we were followed in the hallway by one lady who kept yelling at us and accusing us of killing children. And I will say, similar to today, a lot of the protesters are covering their faces with masks. I will say, I didn't, like I said, I've been in this community for 20 years. I know many of you, and I know many parents in this, my area, my neighbors. I did not recognize a single person at that meeting, not a single adult. I do think that the majority of these people are from outside of our community and have chosen this as a forum to air their grievances for political issues that are not the purview of Edina Public Schools. After I returned home, I thought about what the protesters were trying to accomplish. I will say that even when the protesters controlled the room, they never talked about the specific issues involving Edina, and I credit the gentleman before me who actually was discussing something having to do with the students that were suspended. That was never discussed. I will say, you know, I do support the suspension of students because I have been told that those students were told multiple times, three times, that that was an offensive thing to say, and they chose to say it anyways.
Ms. Leux, please just wrap up.
I will say that, let's see here, it pains me that some of the media have claimed that the protesters were not allowed to be heard, because the reality is, they never allowed the public comment to occur, and they disrupted the meeting. And I please ask you to not be intimidated by the tactics of the protesters. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask again, do people not speak out? We're really trying to be respectful of divergent viewpoints, and if you speak out and interrupt our board meeting, we're going to have to recess again, so I'd appreciate it if people could just listen to what speakers have to say, even if it might be a different opinion than yours.
I think someone may have hit a button over there, because it made the screen go down and block some of the people that are trying to watch. I don't know. It's on that end. There's a button over there.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Sabri Wazwaz.
Sit behind the podium, sorry.
Hi. I want to begin by, first starting off, by reminding you of a famous poet that's taught throughout English, all throughout America, named Henry David Thro. And he said, "Just because it's a man-made law, it doesn't mean it's moral." You cannot suspend students because you think a chant means something without finding out what it really means. "From the River to the Sea, Palestine Will Be Free" simply means that all people in that land, that's Jews, Christians, Muslims, deserve equal rights. That's what that chant means. That means, after two of the greatest genocides committed in this country by people from this country, by racist white people, that means after what they did to the natives and after what they did to African Americans, if right now they were not given equal rights, we would be on the streets chanting, "From the Atlantic to the Pacific, natives and Africans will be free." That chant simply means everybody deserves equal rights. You have to understand, those students were not only suspended, it goes further than that. I repeatedly asked them, "Are you sure?", and they told me, when they came back, two of the teachers told them, because one of them had a Palestinian flag draped on their coats, and that teacher told them, "You can't even do that, or you'll be expelled." And two of their teachers, just to spite them, the next day, came back with the Israeli flag draped on their coats. Teachers, staff members, those students also told the principal and staff that metal water bottles were thrown at them during the protest. You guys have cameras, you have security footage. They repeatedly begged you to watch the cameras, and you guys wouldn't watch the cameras to see racist students throw metal, metal water bottles at them. That's disgusting. What kind of board member, what kind of board member staff does not protect their students? Who's the one that was violent? Those who simply said a chant that everybody deserves equal rights? Or those that had metal water bottles thrown at them? That's disgusting. And I'd like to say something to my sister here, who's Jewish, because we're first cousins. Jews and Arabs are first cousins. I'm going to go off what she said and let you know, it's because of what Jews are saying across the globe, we need you to understand of how serious and dire it is in Palestine. Tens of thousands of Jews are organizing events. The L.A. Bridge, the L.A. Highway, one of America's busiest highways, that was Jews that organized that shut down. That was Jews that organized the takeover of the Israeli consulate in Chicago. That was Jewish Voice for Peace.
You need to wrap up, please.
That was Jews that are being beaten, rabbis, on a daily basis in Israel, because they're simply saying, "Not in our name, never again." If people...
Mr. Wazwaz, please wrap up.
If people always stayed silent because they wanted to agree with what the overwhelming majority of racist government is doing, that means people would have stayed silent during segregation, and that's why segregation took forever to stop. That means people would have took forever to stay silent during slavery, and that's why slavery took forever to stop.
You need to finish speaking. Thank you. Bridget Sharon.
My name is Bridget Sharon, and I am a, sorry, I'm a resident of Minneapolis. Just to put it out there, not a Jew, not a Muslim, not a Palestinian, not an Israeli, I'm just some Midwestern girl born and raised by a handful of Lutherans and one well-intended Catholic, okay? So I'm just putting that out there. I have no personal negative interactions with anyone in this room. But what I also am, in addition to a resident of Minneapolis, is a parent of a publicly enrolled Edina middle-schooler. She loves Edina Middle School, loves, loves, loves it. So I want to thank the school board for establishing the groundwork for an education system where she's able to come and thrive and grow and really be her true self. My daughter is Jewish. She's being raised Jewish. Antisemitism is new to me. Didn't experience a lot of antisemitism in Fargo, North Dakota, as a Lutheran Swede. So the things I'm seeing are a learning curve for me as well, and I'm trying to come at it from a very neutral perspective, because my daughter also has a handful of Muslim friends, quite a few actually, in South Minneapolis. So my question to you, and Dr. Stanley, do you want to put out there that I did send you a letter? You sent me a canned response, but I got the most wonderful callback from Anne Cass? Is that, I'm not sure if that's how you say her name. She was delightful. She was very receptive, she listened, she was kind, and she was encouraging, and I appreciate that. And she proceeded to try to work out a schedule where we connect and discuss, but I'm here, so I just thought I'd ask you face-to-face and ask the school board my question, which was this. So as someone who has a middle-schooler in Southfield Middle School, my question is, there are policies out there against some of the hatred we've seen, whether it's, you know, derogatory signs towards Jews, or seeing a swastika on school property, things like that, things of that nature. If you could continue to express your policies and how you will keep our children, all of our children, Jews, Muslims, and otherwise, safe from that sort of negativity? And equally important, how us parents of Edina School children can reinforce that, what we can do on our end to double down and help you guys do your job in keeping all of our children safe. There's a lot of individuals who are, you know, radicalized or well-intended, and I hear what everyone in this room is saying, but the meanings of things change. At one point, the swastika was a symbol of peace, and that was greatly understood by the world due to events it no longer is. So we have to come together, realize how things are interpreted, how they impact our students, and do what we can to make sure that they feel not just physically safe, but emotionally safe, and are able to flourish within Edina Public Schools. Thank you so much for your time. Greatly appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Doria?
And I did it on the floor.
Is there someone here named Doria? Z Kaplin?
Can you hear me? My name is Z, and I'm a queer Jew. Growing up, I attended synagogue and in mainstream Jewish institutions, I was fed the narrative that what they call Israel, which is actually Palestine, is my ancestral homeland. They told stories of empty uninhabited lands and deserts so dry only Jews establishment there, only Jews colonization could make the desert bloom. I watched people in my life fall victim to these narratives, taking their birthright trip and falling in love with propaganda. Since October 7th, Israel has invested almost $10 million in a vast propaganda campaign aimed at the United States and other Western nations. The United States' stake in Israel's success alone is enough to shape major news outlet coverage, enough to convince us that this is a war that began on October 7th and not a genocide of Palestinians that began long before that. The United States' stake in Israel is not bred out of love for Jews, but of love of power and hunger for access to the Middle East and its resources. Nobody in my Jewish communities growing up spoke of what came before Israel. Nobody shared that the language of the founders of Israel was that of colonization. Nobody mentioned that leading up to Israel's birth in 1948, more than 750,000 Palestinians were ethnically cleansed from their homes by Zionist militias. This was the Nakba, the catastrophe. 300,000 displaced by the Six-Day War in 1967, and on, and on, and on, forced displacement is genocide. And now, when the world cannot turn away, we have become so embedded in our narrative of Jewish victimhood that calls for Palestinian liberation, for Palestinian resistance, for restoration of life pre-colonization, pre-destruction, pre-militarization becomes equated with Jewish annihilation. Propaganda campaigns have convinced us that resisting Israel is resisting Jews. The conflation of anti-Zionism and antisemitism is so dangerous. This conflation is exactly what happened to the legacy of "From the River to the Sea, Palestine Will Be Free." The slogan has roots in a Palestinian call for a secular democratic state, a state in which Palestinians, Jewish Israelis, and all citizens would live in political equality. "From the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea" captures the entire physical space in which Palestinian rights have been denied and violated for which Palestinian rights have been denied and violated for decades. The saying is anti-colonial, not anti-Jew. Can't you see that fights over slogans are a distraction? Edina Schools, shame on you. The suspension is not only wrong, but reveals a fatal flaw in our education system. The only victims here are those who are conflating Palestinian liberation with Jewish annihilation. As a Jew, I stand for Palestinian liberation from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea.
Please wrap up your comments.
May Palestinians never have to live in a reality where they fear being shot by settlers between their homes and their olive groves. Thank you.
Emily Bierman. Emily, is there Emily Bierman?
Hi, my name is Emily Bierman. I live in Edina. My daughter is in kindergarten this year, and I have two younger children that I plan to send to Edina Public Schools. We moved here from Connecticut about two years ago, and we've been thrilled with our experience with the Edina School so far. I want to say thank you to all of you for your hard work, and it's a volunteer job, and it's something that we should all really appreciate. I was not at the meeting in December, but I did watch videos of it, and I found it very upsetting for a variety of reasons. The anti-Semitism on display, and also just the inability of you all to be able to do your jobs, which affects all of our children, those of us who have children in the school district. And so I think that's something important to consider moving forward. I don't, I don't know the legal policies, but it does seem to me that if you have children in the district, you should have the opportunity to speak at a school board meeting. And if you do not have children in the district, I am not sure that I see it as a necessity to be able to speak. I do also want to say that I'm a former civics and history teacher, and I fully embrace free speech. Everybody has the right to express their opinion. We have the right to, freedom of assembly, but we do not have the right to threaten, harass. And so I do support the school's decision to suspend those students. The phrase "from the river to the sea" I view as very anti-Semitic and a call for the annihilation of the Jewish people. And that is something that should not take place on school grounds. And so I do appreciate that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Sana Wazwaz.
All right, so I'm going to begin my comments. First of all, I just want to say that there's been a lot of discourse and suggestions that we, and I'm not going to comment so much on the last meeting, but there's been a lot of suggestions that why couldn't, why can't the pro-Palestinian or anti-Zionist activists be peaceful, et cetera, as if we weren't peaceful? Well, the answer to that is students did, and that's why they got suspended. That's why we're here. We wouldn't be here talking about this if people were not suspended, had water bottles thrown at, and were filmed without consent for doing something peaceful. So that's something I just want to say. The other thing is, I'm hearing a lot of, "I support free speech, but not when it offends me." Well, that's literally not free speech. I was double-majoring in pre-law for a while. If you know anything about the Constitution, you know that something, you can only suppress someone's speech if it's a direct incitement, if there's a clear and present danger, not if you find something offensive, not if you find something hateful. There's no legal precedent to the idea that you can stifle something just because you don't like it. Case in point, I'm gonna go into all of my comments. I actually want to come to you and say that I'm not coming as a Palestine activist. Forget about what you think about Palestine. You know what? Think Hamas is the first, the worst thing in the world. Think Palestine is the worst thing in the world. Think whatever you want. I don't care. I'm gonna say for the first time in my life, I don't care. And the example I'm going to give is in 2016, during the rise of Donald Trump, there was an empirical and statistical rise in hate crimes against Muslims that were associated with his rhetoric, with rhetoric like "Make America Great Again." There were kids in school that were wearing MAGA hats. I felt extremely disgusted, uncomfortable, horrified by these slogans. But what did I do? I protested. I spoke out. I debated. I put up signs. But the one thing I did not do, despite the fact that these slogans were directly and statistically related to incendiary and provocative actions being taken against my people, what did I, what did I not do? I did not call for students to throw water bottles at kids wearing MAGA hats. I did not call for anyone to suspend students, to stifle their speech and to tell them to take off their hats. I did not do any of that, because I will defend the right for a student to hold up an Israel flag. I will hate it, I will, I will protest against it, right? I will argue with such a student, but I will not tell them not to do so. I will not tell the school to suspend students for doing so. I'm consistent. I wish that Edina Board would also be consistent as well. I wish that when you put up statements last, excuse me, last month that said, "We value multiple perspectives," that you would be consistent. I wish that the folks behind me that were just talking about free speech, but, would be consistent. That's not free speech. That is not freedom of speech. So a couple of things. Edina cannot, must apologize to the suspended students and allow them the right to express their political views, because first, the First Amendment, we open the Pandora's Box as soon as we decide that the condition to stifle speech is when we're offended by it. Why can't someone stifle Black Lives Matter because they think it's anti-white? Because it's ridiculous and it's stupid, right?
Ms. Wazwaz, you need to wrap up your speech, please.
Yes, I will, I will. Just the last thing, you know, I heard some people say that it's about student safety, people are feeling unsafe. Two things. One, we have to distinguish between someone feeling uncomfortable and challenged versus them being unsafe. And the second thing is, let me tell you what's unsafe. It is a vice-principal recording students without their consent.
Please wrap up your speech.
That's unsafe.
Thank you. Liz Ross. Liz Ross. Liz Ross. Alyssa Moverin. I apologize if I didn't pronounce the name correctly.
Hi, I'm here as a parent of Edina School, of two Edina School students, and I'm just here to say thank you for keeping my students safe, because that is what your job is, and your job is to educate them. And that's what all of this is taking away from. And so I hope, I'm gonna echo what Sarah had said, is that we're able to get the work that we need to get done, that is vitally important to our students here in this district, not in Minneapolis, not in Eden Prairie, not wherever else people are coming from, but for here in Edina, to get the work that they need to get done. So hopefully, the people that continue to come up here can state if they are a parent of students that are here in Edina, or if they live in Edina, but if you're not, it's just noise. And so, please, please, everybody here, keep your comments to talking about here in Edina, the students that you want them to serve, that are your children or your neighbors, because anything else is preventing them from getting their work done. And that's all I'll have to say.
Osman Ahmed. Osman Ahmed. Please, please don't be disrespectful to each other in the audience. Is Osman Ahmed here? Is it? Oh, I'm sorry. Osman Ahmed?
Hi, my name is Osman Ahmed. I am from Kair, Minnesota, a civil rights organization that fights and defends families of Muslims and all families of facing civil rights and issues. And actually, I have prepared a speech, but everything I went to say has been either said or I don't want to repeat it. So I'm just gonna say a couple of words. One is, I'm hearing a lot about people coming from other places, so I have to say that the children that have been here are from these families, called us and told us they need help. And there are Edina students, there are families that go here, and there are the families that we put when we have the school statements. We put the eye and all, you know, their first city on their pictures on the front pages of our schools and system, in our education system. So I want to make sure, if you go to any school page right now, you have a Somali student, you have a Muslim student, and you called their first city. And those families call us, asking for help. And when you say that you don't have, or you don't live here, or you don't have families here, we do have families here. So I just want to make sure that this is, I really want to say that we are very disappointed, and one of the things that first time happened was, the families that were communicated, were told one-sided. So how do you feel, all the students, Edina students, who are Muslim, who are different religions, when you tell them one-sided, one-narrative, and your statement as school board members, that we trust our children with, and our education of our children? That is not unacceptable. And I just want to say, the students and the community members, please speak up, we got your back, we're not gonna let you down, and we want to protect free speech for all students, because that is what we teach in our schools, and that's what we should teach for civil rights and also civic and leadership development. Thank you so much.
Owen Michelson?
First off, congratulations to our new board members, and for the rest of you, Happy New Year. I'm Owen Michelson, a former board member, and I'm here basically for one reason, because of last month's disrupted school board meeting. And my statement for all seven of you and eight in absence is that you have a right to be here. You have a right to gather, you have a right to deliberate, you have a right to decide in peace. Do not succumb to the mob's mentality from last month. Do not be intimidated by it. Make your decisions for or against them, apart from mob intimidation. I've had many of my disagreements with decisions made here at the board over the years, and I speak for many members of the community. Whether we agree with you or not, you have the blessing of Edina to make the decisions for this school district. And there's something almost sacred about this place that does not permit the kind of disruption that happened last month. So thank you for your work, and remember that many of us support what you're doing.
May Soon Wazwaz.
Everything that could have possibly been said has been phenomenally covered by Sinat and my uncle Sabri, but I do want to cover some, a few points. The first and foremost, that last comment, saying that we've had disagreements, but I've never done what I've done, well, you know, to be frank, disagreeing about the price of lunch is not the same thing as about disagreeing on your right to express your First Amendment right of freedom of speech and speak out on a genocide. But as Sinat has mentioned, we're not here to convince you to be pro-Palestinian. You don't even have to agree with me. But as we said before, the chant "From the river to the sea" is one calling for liberation. It is no different than if a native person had said, "I want freedom from the Pacific to the Atlantic." It is no different than a black person saying, "We want an end to segregation." And again, but let's say you say, "No, I think it's, it has these racist connotations." I question, I genuinely wonder, and I was on the phone with a person from Edina, I forgot who it was, from the school board. I was going to ask, before he shut the phone on me, I was going to ask if he would've done the same if someone was in support of Netanyahu, a man who was, he's very famous in Israel for being anti-Palestinian, for inciting genocidal rhetoric. I wonder if a person was looking up to the founders of Israel, if the Edina School Board would've acted and said, "No, we have to suspend you. You are making students feel unsafe." That is what I question. So as mentioned, you can disagree, you can protest, students will have these conversations. But unless you give actual evidence that this statement is directly linked to genocidal connotations, this is something that symbolizes explicitly genocide, then there is no way you can stifle students' freedom of speech. I was on the phone, and I was trying to express this, and unfortunately, all of you in the crowd are saying, you know, "Why don't they just peacefully talk?" We did. We had, people were calling, we emailed, we said, "Just give us one call." People were telling me they had rude responses, people like me had the phone shut on them. This is not, you know, this is just hiding. Just call it for what it is. You don't want to address the elephant in the room, you don't want to address the fact that students were not allowed to speak on a genocide. And can I just say frankly, I know I said that the conversation isn't about Palestine to convince you, but I want to say that I find it horrible that people in this audience are more concerned about feelings of lack of safety rather than thinking about the people in Palestine and trying to support those who are speaking out. Is it really, is it really making you feel unsafe? Or as Sinat mentioned, are you just uncomfortable? What is the problem here? You know, this is the equivalent of a white student said, "I just, you know, this talk about lack, you know, abolishing segregation, that's cute and all, but my children." I don't care about anyone's child if another child is being killed and people are trying to speak out for them. That is, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our community comments, and I just want to say personally, I appreciate people adhering to our three minutes and being respectful of divergent viewpoints. We're now going to move on with our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We are now going to move on to our first discussion item, which is our Legislative Action Committee platform and action item. And I believe our Legislative Action Committee Chair is presenting this item.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dan Aaron. Did you want to go present from there?
Sure.
Okay.
So the 2024 Legislative Action Committee is formed of a group of students and community members as well as staff. We have a platform that we are talking about as well as a plan of action. The advocacy efforts and the goals are kind of consistent with the years past, where we're talking about advocacy efforts related to the priorities regarding the legislative session, building relationships with the legislative representation, and then advocacy efforts of the student voice to be amplified. We do a couple of activities related to hosting a breakfast for legislators, and that's coming up in the end of the month here in January. We have a Day of Capital later on in March as well, and then we will also try to solicit community support of our activities as well. We have worked with the Metropolitan, or sorry, Association of Metropolitan School Districts and the Minnesota School Board Association, as well as other neighboring districts, to come up with a legislative platform for Edina. There are five components, or six components, I'm sorry, of that. First one being increasing mental health support for staff and students. Second one would be strengthen and support special education programs. Third is stabilizing education funding. Four is ensuring safe and modern school facilities. Five is increase in diversifying the workforce. And six is prioritizing student-centered learning throughout enhanced local decision-making. More details about these platform pieces is available on, and the information we'll be presenting to the groups, as well as on our platform that we'll be presenting. So we're presenting this later on this evening for approval as a platform. Any questions?
Do board members have questions?
Thanks, Dan, and thanks for your team for putting together this platform. I was wondering, under number three, stabilize education funding, are you able to speak, or someone able to speak to, when you say increase local optional revenue, what that, I just, I'm not familiar with that term.
I wouldn't do that justice as much as Mert would do, so can I ask Mert? So can I ask Mert? Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Director Gable. Thanks for the question. The local optional revenue refers to the $724 per pupil unit that each public school district in the state of Minnesota that has a tax base has. The board can approve that without any voter approval. That $724 has been fixed at $724 since inception, and like the basic education formula, has lost ground to inflation in the ensuing years. Were that to be adjusted to inflation, it'd be upwards of $850 per, per adjusted pupil unit.
So that is not necessarily, I don't want anyone in the public to see that, that is not an additional tax on our, on our taxpayers. That is coming from state funding.
No, in this school district, since we have no equalization, our tax base would bear the full burden of that increase.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members?
I had a quick question, Dan. Under strengthen and support special education programming, I noticed that there wasn't, there was an absence of advocating the state for more special education funding specifically. I was just wondering why that was? If there was because they gave us so much money for special education funding last year that you wanted to prioritize other items?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We wanted to focus on the federal side of it.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
But on that point, I guess I just want to make sure it's clear that the amount of funding that was provided to this firm, Special Education, did not fully fund the cross subsidy that we'd been suffering under for God knows how long. It did improve it by, what, 40%, 42%, something to that effect?
47%.
It has a slight increase that was, is built in over the next one or two years, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, so the component of special education funding that was increased was the cross subsidy aid itself. Once a school district's cross subsidy is calculated, in years past, we received 6.43% of that cross subsidy. We will now receive 44% of that on an ongoing basis. So roughly $3.5 million of extra funding for the school district.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's, would it also be fair to say this is second part of Biennium, and this is typically a non-funding year? And so many of the platform items are not focused on financial funding, but they're focused on policy and things like that.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. That's very helpful.
Thank you for your work on this. Next discussion item, we have the Social Studies Guiding Change Document with Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody St. Hubert here to present.
Hey, good evening, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, board directors, community members, and colleagues. Bethany Van Oostel, our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, is here to review our Social Studies Guiding Change Document. It was last discussed at a board workshop in December, and we are ready to have a discussion here at our meeting. I'll let you introduce it, and then we'll just turn it over for questions and feedback.
Thank you. So our social studies standards are set to be released here. Right now, they're commissioner-approved, and we're waiting for them to be finalized. And as we look ahead to the steps that we want to take to get ready for the release of those standards in 2026, '27, we are starting the process with our guiding change so that we can move forward with our committee in a way that supports our values, mission, and vision in Edina. So I trust that you've read the report, and I will open for questions.
I was wondering if you could explain the, well, I take that back because it's a better question for our courses, when we get to our courses for action items.
Okay.
So I apologize. I will take my question back. Board members, do you have questions or comments about the Social Studies Guiding Change Document?
Madam Chair, I do have one quick qualifying question, just because of the ethnic studies element that then has been added into statute and so on and so forth. Does that have any either current impact or future impact related to the work that you've done here in updating our social studies guidelines?
Really, it does not have, cause any changes to it. So it won't have an impact. And we've been discussing where that will land in terms of what content department. Social studies would be a great fit, and we're prepared to put it there in alignment with what we have with the guiding change proposals here.
Great. Thank you.
I just had a comment, I think I've made this before, but I want to reiterate, thank you for the work on this document. We did get a chance to see it in Teaching and Learning. I really appreciate the addition and the real focus on literacy, making sure that we're dovetailing our literacy work with our social studies work and that important aspect of being an informed consumer of information, because I think that's a really important skill that our students need as, as we move in to, as they move on. So thank you for this work.
Could you explain the timeline as far as implementation, when the board will see, just a overarching timeline?
Yeah. So we really are following the standards closely, right? So the timeline for the release of the standards is '26, '27. And so we started our committee meetings, this is our first committee meeting. And so we look to move down the implementation science process, and so really making sure that we're understanding our current reality. That was another piece of the process. And so what we would hope to have is a full understanding of where we currently are in terms of resources and instruction and course alignment by the end of this year, so that we can then look to what changes we want to be made as we move forward. And it's just a process that we'll follow in terms of just the curriculum review process, but we should have things ready to be implemented by '26, '27 for those new standards.
Anything else from board members? Great. Thank you for your work on this so far. Next, we're going to move on to international travel recommendations.
Okay, so extended travel has been a longstanding component of excellence of education in Edina Public Schools. The last couple of years, this has been interrupted due to the variables with COVID and challenges that we are faced, that we have been facing around the world with travel. And yet, as Principal, Assistant Principal Carter mentioned in our workshop today, this is the first year we're back kind of into normal routine of that international travel. And so at the same time that we're having conversations just around purpose and equity and access, we want to make sure that we keep the process going for our students to experience the current opportunities that are in place. So what is in front of you today for this discussion is several proposals by staff members that are staff sponsors of these international travel experiences. There are six from Edina High School, and then there is one from Normandale Elementary School. I did want to point out about two of the unique situations with the Edina High School ones. One of them is specifically an experience that has been canceled twice now already. So the group of students that were prepared and ready to go on this experience, which is the Portugal Experience, have had to have that canceled and told that we would try to find another alternative for them. So that does, that's why you see two science experiences that are international coming forward to you at this time. And then the other one that I think is our unique experience to, to share is the one that is in conjunction with our Rotary. And that is also presented by Lindsay Smaka, and it is an experience that they will be, it was asked at our board workshop, if the Rotary Exchange, or the Rotary people that will be going with our team would be chaperones. They won't. We'll have Edina chaperones on that experience, but we're doing the work and the experience and collaboration. There's been some service learning projects, specifically in Zimbabwe, that our Rotary's been working on. So there would be a component of that experience where they're traveling and seeing that service learning piece, and just having a more broad and authentic and intentional experience and connection. But Rotary is not going to be chaperoning or sponsoring specifically. We're just going to be partnering with them. And then the elementary experience is for our Normandale Immersion students, and again, has been part of that programming for many years. So at that, at this point, I'll turn it over to see if there's any questions about individual experiences or any feedback or input in, in general.
Board members, questions or input? Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to our fiscal year cost containment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Stanley, those still remaining with us tonight. At the December 22 special meeting, the administration made public for the first time its analysis of the fiscal year 2025 through 2029 general fund operations, and also made a revision to its expectations for the current year, fiscal year 2024. That revision was mainly due to the actual results of collective bargaining rather than the anticipated results when the budget was first developed in the spring of 2023. After using the best-known information at the time regarding appropriations from the state of Minnesota, our own property tax revenues, our current staffing structure, and how we expect salaries and benefits to increase, both in the current year, next year, and beyond, the school district believes that it will end fiscal year 2024 with an unassigned fund balance of about 5.7% or a decline of $789,000. That is a deviation from the more than $5 million that we plan to add in this fiscal year. In fiscal year '25, we expect a further deficit spending in the unassigned portion of fund balance to the tune of $2 million, and a further decline to the unassigned fund balance to 3.9%. The 5.7% figure at the end of '24 is below the board minimum policy of 6%, meaning that we will immediately engage the budget reduction, reallocation, and revenue generation process, otherwise known as the Berg. That process will involve senior leadership, community stakeholders, our Finance and Facilities Committee, and a number of other parties, ultimately collaborating to bring forward a recommendation for the school board to consider for cost containment. Before we get to that point, however, it's important for the school board to formally recommend a cost containment target. At this time, the district administration is going to recommend a $3.6 million reduction. That would bring the fund balance at the end of fiscal year '25 to 6.9%, which is where we ended fiscal year '23. Were we to use an alternative option of, say, $2.56 million, that would bring us exactly to 6% at the end of fiscal year '25. However, in the immediate subsequent fiscal year, fiscal year '26, we would need a significant Berg process so that we would be back up in fiscal year '27. The final option that was considered by the administration was a $4.4 million reduction, which would leave the district with an unassigned fund balance of 7.45% at the end of fiscal year '25, and give the district two full years of stability. At this time, we have not considered that option for a recommendation due to the severity of it, and believe that the $3.6 million option is a nice middle ground to provide the district with some short-term stability and allow us to reconvene in a year and a half or so and see if the state gives us additional funds that we weren't expecting, or if the results of our actual financial performance are better than anticipated. With that, I'll turn it over to the school board for discussion.
Thank you, Director Woodard. Board members, what questions or comments do you have about this discussion item?
I don't have an additional question. I just wanted to point out that we had a chance to see this in our work session and ask some questions of Director Woodard. And it was stated at that point, thank you for putting this together. I think it's really well done. It lays out the different revenue streams that we have and the role that enrollment plays in that. So could you also highlight the timeline? Because I know that was a question asked during the work session. Can you kind of outline what stakeholders can anticipate with the timeline on this?
Yep. So I guess the administration now is formally recommending that we contain our budget to the tune of $3.62 million for fiscal year '25. At the February regular meeting, we'll have an agenda item that asks you to formally approve that recommendation. And at that time, we'll also provide a preliminary list of items that we will reduce from our operations to equal that $3.62 million. You'll consider that over the next month, and we'll bring that back to the March regular meeting for action. From that point, HR and other departments will actually engage in making those reductions, and then we'll provide the full budget to you for first viewing in May, and then ultimately approval in June.
Great. Thank you. And am I correct in remembering that we're definitely soliciting feedback from stakeholders, and so they can anticipate if anyone's watching and interested in this process, the opportunity to attend a, what we call a Berg budget reduction meeting, and kind of provide input on, on items of this process?
Absolutely. So we have four community members that sit on our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. So they've been engaged in the process since November and December. The wider community will be invited to participate in Berg meetings, starting with a virtual session on January 25th. And after that, we'll have a number of quote-unquote town hall type meetings at a number of our school facilities. I'm sure we'll also have electronic surveys available for folks to let us know what their priorities are, what their ideas are, and all of that will be considered as part of our decision-making process.
Thank you very much, Mert. I would really recommend anyone in the community that is wondering if you're, have paid any attention to news headlines over the last six, eight months, have heard of the windfall that school districts have gotten from the state, and are wondering, how could it be that we have to cut our budget again? I would highly recommend looking in detail at the document Mert put together, which does a great job of explaining. Exceptionally grateful for the money that we did get from our state, it still does not cover the cost of doing business, as it was alluded to earlier, still covering only 50% of our special education costs. The document goes over the price of things like energy and salaries. None of these things are commensurate with the amount of money that we're getting from the state. So I might just really appreciate the detail that you did put into that document. It does help explain how we are still cutting and why it is the fiscally responsible thing to do to stave off more enormous cuts and us not having money in our reserves in the future. So even though it's painful, it's unfortunately necessary. So thank you for that.
And a year ago, what was that number as far as the reduction that we were looking at before the state finance picture changed?
Thank you for the question, Director Mann. Last fiscal year around this time, we had presented an anticipated shortfall of about $4 million, which the district assumed at that time that there would be no additional funding from the state. So we fixed our problem locally without relying on state to come through with funding. And then in May, we became aware that the state did follow through with a lot of the rhetoric that was going around at the time, and we did receive additional funding. At that time, we weren't sure what to do with it, so we were, we made the decision to allow it to fall to the fund balance. Subsequent to that, other things have happened within the school district, and we've made strategic choices. And now we are going to have to engage the process again to the tune of $3.6 million.
Anything else? Thank you, Director Woodard. We're going to move on to our policy review, and we have quite a few different policies. And I would like to introduce our new policy chair, Director Gable, to walk us through the policies.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. All right. So we are, tonight, we are looking at several different policies that have gone through the policy committee. And for just general background, for anyone that's watching or, or interested in this process, the district has multiple policies that we, many policies, that we use to guide our work. And we are, as a policy committee and as a board, are committed to making sure that our policies align with our strategic plan. And different hundred series align to different categories. And you can see all this on our district webpage and kind of understand that. So the policies before you tonight for discussion have gone through the policy committee. Usually, an administrator is assigned the policy, one of the policies that's, aligns with their work, and has had an opportunity to run it through the lens of Minnesota School Board Association. Sometimes we engage our legal counsel if there's legal ramifications that a policy might have, and then different stakeholders, depending on what the policy is. So that's a little bit of a background on how these policies will come to the board. And then, as you see, we have a series of policies here that are up for discussion tonight, where the board will have a chance to weigh in on and ask questions. And then you'll notice under our action items that we also have a series of different policies. And those policies have already come before the board as discussion items, had questions asked of them. asked of them, and then have gone back to the administrator assigned to them to answer the questions, clear up any questions, and now are on the agenda item for action tonight. So that's a little bit of background on how we run policy. So I'm going to start with Policy 406, which is Public and Private Personnel Data. And we have our Director of Human Resources, Human Resources, because all of a sudden I couldn't remember your official title. Sonia Saylor here to walk us through the changes that you see before you. And anything that is in blue are changes that have been made to this policy since its previous revision.
Thank you, Director Gabler. Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and members of the Adana School Board. So Policy 406 governs public and private personnel data, most specifically for employees. However, it also covers volunteers, independent contractors, and applicants for employment. This policy informs employees and others of what type of information is public about them if they're hired as a public employee. And of course, also what information could be public about them if they apply for employment with a public entity as well. Most, the vast majority of recommendations for changes in Policy 406 come from the Minnesota School Board Policy 406 as well. The, a couple of things that we talked at length in our, in the Board's Policy Committee, is there just are some areas that can come as a surprise to new members to the public or applicants for employment? For example, a finalist in a public school setting, a finalist for a position in a public school setting, their name only becomes public if they are being interviewed or recommended to the appointing authority within a school district. Well, the appointing authority is the School Board. Therefore, the only names of finalists that become public in a school district are superintendents because that is the only position that a School Board actually does all of the interviewing for and determines the finalists. So that's kind of one example of information that's good for us to provide in a Board policy to ensure that people understand it. Another one, you know, just the information, if you are in public employment for the first time, you sometimes can be surprised at some of the information that is public about you as a public employee, you know, such as your salary and your terms and conditions of employment, your benefits, your work experience, your training, your education. All of those things are a little different than what many people have found in the private sector as well. So with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if it applies to this policy as well as other policies that are going to come, there were new legislative things that came out that we needed to adhere to in our policies because they became effective in July 1st of 2023. I don't know if anything specific to the public and personal data is a component of the changes that are being proposed.
The, the one that you may be thinking of is, it will come up in 515 in regards to student data. There, the only other piece that I can think of off the top of my head with employee data is we, school districts are now required to provide some, what was formerly private data to, to employee unions upon hire within a school district as well, within a certain number of days. And so that's one piece, and that change is reflected in here.
Great. Thank you.
I was confused about the verbiage used in Section 4D, and it states, "Data about applicants for appointment to a public body collected by the district as a result of the applicant's application for appointment." So who would be a person that gets appointed to a public body? Like who, what individuals are we talking about that already applied for employment?
A School Board member.
I was wondering if that was the School Board. I was like, are these people that apply to committees?
I mean, it's kind of an interesting way, that comes directly from statute, of course, but it's an interesting way of saying they've applied to run for School Board, right? And so, yes, so that, that area does apply to School Board members?
Is there any way to clear, even put in parentheses? Or I read that and I literally, I was like, I think that's School Board members, but since we have like our Special Education Committee that is, could be considered, it was just honestly really confusing to me, and I don't know if someone reading this would have any clue what we're talking about.
Well, it's so interesting. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, Chair Allenberg, we actually went through this in Policy Committee. We've been trying to have a definition section at the top, and sometimes when our policies get to be 15 pages long, it can get lost in the like, oh, yeah, 20 minutes ago, I read about what the public body was. So we can take that feedback back just to kind of know if there's a more, because ultimately we want these to read clearly. And so if, you know, it is up in the definition that public body means the School Board, but you have to scroll all the way back.
I think that'd be great. Any, any way that your committee could maybe provide a little clarity around that specifics section, Section 4D?
Sure.
That's my only feedback. So, thank you.
And to be clear, the only public element that we're talking about is the School Board. There is no other definable function that this would apply to.
Correct. Correct. In this context. And so we, so the, in the first section in the definite, or excuse me, in Section 3 under definitions, F is in Frank, that actually did not come from MSBA. That definition was recommended by the Policy Committee that that be added to assist exactly with what Chair Allenberg, you just pointed out. So good feedback.
So, yeah, we can, we can talk, Sonia, maybe you and I can talk and just see if there's a, if we want to make a change to that and make it sound a little bit clearer. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
For sure. Yep.
Why, and this might be something for legal, but why use public body instead of School Board, I guess?
Why use?
Why even use the public body if it only means School Board?
Because it comes directly from the Minnesota Data Practices Act. So that's statutory language.
We're going to move on and talk about Policy 506, Student Conduct and Discipline. For those of you following along at home, this has come before us a couple times as we've kind of adapted. And tonight, we have a new change that our Assistant Superintendent Randy Smazel is going to talk to us about.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, School Board members and community. We have previously reviewed Policy 506 extensively as a Policy Committee, and previously that came to the Board, and previously that went through action. However, we did have two very small changes since then. One was some clarity that was added from Minnesota School Boards Association around some change language due to new statutory clarification. And that is in Section 3H in the definition of suspension. And so there was this little element of clarity that that term, suspension, does not apply when it is less than a day. So we wanted to make that change, to make that more clear and make sure that that's in line with a statute. And then further clarification in Number 12 of the appendix, and it is basically just a more clear description of that particular infraction. And those are the two very small changes to 506.
Can you explain the rationale behind the driving infraction updated language? It says that basically the driving, the careless driving infractions apply to the entire carpool and not just the driver.
Right.
I'm sorry, that is in the appendix. It is Page 6, 506, Policy 506, Page 6.
So the infraction applies to that particular permit, which applies to the carpool. It's always difficult to know exactly who is driving in those situations. We expect students to be responsible for the particular permit as a carpool group of students, and so they have a responsibility to each other to be, to be responsible for that particular permit for that car.
So a piece of feedback that I would just like to offer to consider is to, I can understand it applying to individuals in the car at the time, but there's so many instances at the high school that the chances of the entire carpool being in the car every single time that car leaves. And I could see quite often students not even being in a car if something reckless happens, and just because they happen to be part of a carpool. I would hate for students to get punished for not even, if they weren't even in a car. So I don't know, it's just some feedback I have to consider if students are even present at the time of the offense.
Yeah, and we can certainly get some clarity from our administrative team at the high school about how they've handled those situations in the past and how that applies in this scenario that you're describing.
And if this, if this does pass, then I think there needs to be a lot of education for student drivers and their families because I think this will be a surprise to many people.
I think I would only add, and I don't need an explanation now, but like, what's the actual intent of this particular provision as written and executed? I appreciate the fact that there might not be clarity on exactly the exact circumstances that took place, but I'm curious as to what corrective action we're trying to get from this particular element.
And I might ask Dr. Stanley or Dr. Smazel to talk a little bit about that because we did talk about this in Policy Committee, this exact conversation. And this change is coming before us tonight because our administrators said this is not working in how it's written. And so, Dr. Stanley or Dr. Smazel, could you kind of talk a little bit about the intent of this and how we feel this would work better?
Yeah, absolutely. Our high school administrators came to us and, and they did share that oftentimes there is pushback. Most times, it's really when kids are in the car. All of the kids have been in the car. So I appreciate Randy saying that, excuse me, that he is going to seek out additional information. And there is that sense of accountability that students have to have for one another, especially in the high school context. You know, as they, as they move to the post-high school context, they will be held accountable in different ways for, for, you know, those that they are hanging around with, for activities that they do. And so ultimately, the ultimate goal is to keep our parking lot safe, is to make certain that students aren't getting hurt. We know that we have a lot of students who are driving, and we know that oftentimes they are in such a hurry to get out of the parking lot, and we want responsible drivership. And when you're partnering, you know, when you're choosing your partners for that, that carpool, it is important to make sure that we're holding, that kids are holding one another accountable. But ultimately, really, it's about the safety of, of students in our parking lot.
So Chair Allenberg, would it be helpful if Dr. Smazel, like he indicated, kind of goes back, gets a little bit of clarity, see if there's any changes or any clearing up before it comes for action?
Yeah, I would appreciate that. And again, my main question was around students not even being in the car, less, my, I'm not as concerned about the permit itself, but feeling that students should actually be present if they're going to be penalized.
Yep. Okay. I will do.
Any other questions on 506?
One, one last question. 506, remind me of the frequency of 506 as it comes before us, because I think it's important because this is one of the key ones that we have. What is the frequency of review of this one?
Thank you for that great question. So I did not mention before, we've tried to get a cadence where each of our policies is reviewed about every three years. There are certain policies that have to be reviewed yearly, annually, and this is one of those policies. So we've also worked really hard, or the administration has, to make sure that families are aware. If you have, I know that if you have a high school or they've had this, they've had this discussed with them at the high school and you sign a form if you're a parent, so.
I look forward to knowing that answer myself now that I'll be on the Policy Committee.
Yes. All right. Any other questions on 506? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Smazel. All right. Moving on down the row, we are going to look at 514, which is Bullying Prohibition. And so Dr. Smazel is going to take us through the changes on that policy.
Thank you. Policy 514 provides the framework to assist the district in its goal of preventing and responding to acts of bullying, intimidation, violence, reprisal, retaliation, and other disruptive behavior. Not only applies to students, but also independent contractors, teachers, administrators, and other school district personnel. So with that in mind, as we have reviewed the policy, what you'll notice is that the Purpose section was reduced to be more clear, and the language was moved to the General Statement of Policy, that language from the Purpose statement. In this section, a reference to malicious and sadistic conduct was added, which is in model policy and now in statute, very specific language in statute was added around that. We also added information regarding consequences for students who committed acts of bullying. The Definition section includes information on malicious and sadistic conduct, inclusion of acts of bullying on personal devices, cyberbullying as an example, and a definition of the building report taker. We did add references to appendices in the policy so that readers know where to find additional specific information. In the Notice section of policy, Roman numeral number eight, we added clarity regarding the posting of the bullying policy and reporting forms at the district sites and on the district website. Legal references, we're updating the Bullying and Hazing Reporting Form. In Appendix 1 is consistent with that found in Policy 526. Trying to keep those two forms the same, so as we update one, it's also updated in the other policy. Appendix 2 was eliminated due to our discussion about the redundancy of the language in the, in the, in the appendix, and then some of that language was moved into the policy. Appendix 3 will be the new Appendix 2, and 4 will be the new Appendix 3 in our proposal as we've eliminated that original Appendix 2. In the reporting procedure in Section 4, we reference the online reporting form, or in Appendix 4, which is now the new 3, we reference that online reporting form. This will be linked from district and building pages under the Families tab for families and students to easily be able to find that, and it will be posted in numerous places in buildings where students can regularly travel so that they have access to that. There's currently an online form available, and we will be updating that to match and make sure that's in alignment with our reporting form to make multiple pathways for families, staff members, other district personnel, or students to be able to report issues of bullying. So with that, I will turn it back to the Board.
Board members, do you have any questions about Policy 514, Bullying Prohibition?
I think the only question I have was, I was kind of interested in the Training and Education component, which is in Section 7. And this is more just a, a general question, not so much the train education of our team or personnel with the district, but have we ever thought about, or is it ever a practice to where we try to train and educate students on bullying and appropriateness and so and so forth, and what it looks like and what happens and so on and so forth? I don't, I don't have a child at the high school at the moment. I mean, I don't know anything at the middle school that's happening. Is that ever a practice that districts apply? And if so, are we doing that and would that fall into this policy or something else?
Yeah, that is practice that we definitely do with students, typically through advisory at the elementary level. It happens in homeroom classrooms with teachers, so there are definitely opportunities that we do that. And of course, unfortunately, when incidences happen, that is also another great opportunity to educate, to help families understand that we have this policy, to help kids understand, here's what bullying is, here's what it looks like. Now, how do we repair harm and restore that relationship that was damaged? So, there, there are different types of opportunities. There's opportunities that are more broad across the system, and then there are those, definitely those opportunities that are more of a one-on-one basis as infractions do occur.
Any other questions on this policy? Okay, that will come to action then at the February meeting. Dr. Smazzle is now going to talk to us about the next policy, which is 526, Student Hazing Prohibition.
So, hazing means committing an act against a student or cursing a student into committing an act that creates a substantial risk of harm to a person in order for the student to be initiated into or affiliated with a student organization or for any other school-related purpose. So, just kind of a statement of what this is about. We've made some updates to the policy, including a streamlined Purpose section, the addition of language around restorative practices, which typically unpack the incident, try to help students understand the impact that was had, so that that harm can be restored and relationships can be restored. The harm can be addressed and relationships can be restored as a tool to resolve conflicts between individuals. And the building report definition was added to the Definition section, similar to the previous Policy 514 that we talked about. Language was incorporated into the Reporting section to reference the reporting form at the back of the policy, in Appendix, and online. Cross-references to Policy 506 were updated. Appendix One was revised so that the reporting form, again, in Policies 514 and 526 are identical and consistent. The electronic form will then mirror what is available in the reporting form within Policy 526. So, with that, I'll turn it back for questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions on Policy 526, Student Hazing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smazzle. All right, and next, our next policy is Policy 606.5, Library Materials, and so I'm going to invite Director Montes Daily to come up. This is, and I'm sure she will speak about this, this is a new policy.
Good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Dr. Stanley, members of the board, new and old. Policy 606.5 is a new policy, as Karen Gabler said, and we currently have Policy 606, which is in regards to instructional materials and how those are selected and how those may be challenged or questioned. That policy falls under Jody D. St. Hubert and the Teaching and Learning Department. Last summer, our media specialists realized that we don't really have a policy around our media spaces and the materials that are in there, be they electronic, text, not textbooks, regular books, magazines, any sort of subscriptions that we have. And given the climate of the country over the past year or so, they took some time to develop 606.5, which would speak to the language of instructional, or the materials in our library spaces. After spending a lot of time with the Minnesota Library Association, the American Library Association, as well as some of the work that our surrounding districts are doing regarding this policy, they actually presented to me a amended version of Policy 606, and then shortly thereafter this year, the Minnesota School Board Associations actually came out with their own version of Policy 606, which is 606.5. And so, what we did is we took a look at Policy 606.5 from MSBA and the work that our media specialist did over the summer, and we merged those two documents together. And so, that's what you see before you. And really, as it says on there, the purpose of this and the intent of this is to provide direction for the responsibility and the selection of library materials. And as, I won't read over all of this to you, but I'll definitely take questions, but our main goal is that, to make sure that we are enriching our curriculum, that we're supporting our curriculum, that we're enhancing our curriculum, and advancing our strategic directive by the materials that are in our library spaces. And this policy really provides the guidelines for how we select those materials and how we remove those materials and how we challenge those materials should a challenge need to arise. So, that's the, the premise, the overview of this policy. I welcome any questions that you might have, or concerns, or suggestions.
Dr. Burman?
Since we don't have this current policy in place, if someone had an objection to something, what exactly takes place today?
So, typically, it would still go to the media specialist. That's generally been what's happening, is that a person that had an objection would go to the media specialist and say, you know, I don't like this book, or I don't want this book in the media space, and the media specialists have generally been handling it with their building principals. But creating consistent policy is really key to that, so that we're handling it the same in every single building, in every single type of circumstance, and not doing one-off things. So, this is really an important policy to enact that.
Excellent. And then the second question would be, whether we've tracked this up to this point or not, how often are we getting requests for people to say they find something objectionable in the library space and wish for something to happen with it?
We are very fortunate that it's pretty minimal. I don't have an exact number, but it is, in my, in the time that I've been here, it is actually pretty minimal.
Great. And then the ultimate decision, once we put this consistent policy into place, to determine whether something should or should not be deemed appropriate or not, where does the ultimate decision lie?
So, at the end of the day, everything rests with the school board, so that is still the ultimate decision, but there is a process that's put into place. And so, essentially, what would happen is that a person that would like to object or request reconsideration of library materials would first speak with the media specialist, who would then be able to talk through the selection criteria and how it was put into place and why. And that's what we call an informal kind of review. If that doesn't work for them, then they would, the next step would be, and that's all outlined in here, but the next step with them, for them would be to work with the building principal to determine if we need to go to a more formal process. And in a formal process, we actually put together a committee. The individual would have to fill out this very lengthy appendix that is here, this form, about why they want this material reconsidered, and then that goes to a committee who would review and discuss that and bring that decision back to, well, ultimately, it would go back to Dr. Stanley, so she was aware of it, and then at the end of the, the individual can still appeal finally to the board. That's the, the process.
Thank you for mapping that out for us.
There you go.
A comment I had was, I would like, this would, I would like the Policy Committee, but ultimately, it would be Administration to consider putting in the appendix how the committee will be formed, because...
When you say how as opposed to who?
Because you have who.
Right.
But I'm concerned that if something like this does happen and gets to the point that it does have to come to a committee, it's obviously going to be a contentious issue, and I would hate for at that point to not, there already have been in place very clear understanding of the process, for example, like how will members of the community be chosen for this committee?
Sure.
Because we don't want to be, we don't want to be accused then of creating a process so it's a, it's a biased committee. And so, I think it'd be a good idea to have, whatever the process is, I have no recommendation for a process, to maybe state like, that will be chosen by an application, or, or whatever that process might be.
Sure.
I, I would recommend that it's very clearly articulated and that that process is followed. So, there's, like I said, there's, can be no appearance of impropriety if this ever happens.
Makes sense.
That was all I had, but I appreciate, I really, I really, really appreciate you putting the work into this, so.
Any additional questions about this policy? Okay, I echo, thank you for the work that you and our media specialists have done on this policy. It's very well done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we are going to look at Policy seven, hold on, let me get to the right page here, 715, which is Food and Nutrition Services Program, and I believe we have Director Woodert coming up to speak to us about this policy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Policy 715 actually did not go through many changes except for the addition of one section. That one section was added to bring us into compliance with state and federal law. Unfortunately, we have neglected to do so over the previous years. State and federal law requires our school policy or procedure, should we choose to leave it at that level, to define how we deem bad meal that's uncollectible, what we would do once they are deemed uncollectible. We must have language in our policy ensuring that all students who qualify for free or reduced lunches receive at least one free breakfast and one free lunch per school day, and we must also ensure that once a student or participant in our school service, school lunch service program places a meal on their tray, that that tray cannot be forcibly removed by a member of the school district. In regard to the section of the policy that states all students who receive educational benefits must receive a, one free meal per day, that's no longer relevant at this time because all students in the state of Minnesota will receive one free breakfast and one free lunch. However, that program is subject to change in the future, and it's, I think, important for the school district to memorialize its, I guess, its standing morally in terms of providing a nutritious meal for all of our students, and so that's why that is present in our policy as well.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions about this policy? Okay, then it will come before us in February. Thank you, Director Woodert. I think, okay, the next policy is 807, Closing of Facilities Due to Hazardous Weather or Other Emergency Conditions. I cannot recall who's speaking to us about this. Dr. Stanley?
Did this so long ago that I forgot.
I know.
But it is me. Sorry about that. It is absolutely me, and there are very minimal changes. Really, many of them were just related to updating wording to just make the policy, provide clarity in the policy. In the, in the appendix, we added additional information to make certain that we were including community education programs and that they were represented, and some clarity on the protocols. Members of my team that are involved in the process, and protocols that we've put in place in the past couple of years, and we just wanted those to be represented within the policy.
Excellent, thank you. And board members, do you have any questions about this policy? No? Okay, fabulous, that will come before us then in February. Next up is Policy 810, Safety and Security of Students, Employees, Visitors, and Buildings and Grounds. So, this one.
Yeah, Natasha stepped out. This is Natasha's policy, and, you know, actually, I believe that she can hear me. Can we go on to the next one and then come back to this one?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so, the, the last one, but we're going to come back to it. 902, Use of School District Facilities and Equipment. And so, this one, as you'll notice, is this, oh, this is Anne Marie. Okay. Let me see here. Oh, this was a big one, too. I feel like I don't have... Okay, great. Is this right?
We're just going to wait for a moment.
I don't have any jokes.
An unofficial, an unofficial recess for a minute.
Were you halfway down the interstate? Not, I was, I was resuming my incident command duties, so.
Thank you. Director Montes Daily is back. She's going to talk to us about Policy 810, Safety and Security of Students, Employees, Visitors, and Our Buildings and Grounds.
All right, good evening once again. Policy 810 is not a new policy, it's one that we've had before. There were actually really just a few minor updates to this policy overall. The biggest change that you'll notice in this policy is that what used to be the Director of Buildings and Grounds that kind of oversaw this policy has just transferred to the Director of Media and Technology as I oversee all the safety and security. So, largely, that was one of the biggest language changes in here. You will also see that we added Section B under, on Section Three, Program Oversight B, we added some language about Policy 806, our emergency management policy, and that was just to create some consistent language with 806, which we passed earlier this year, went through to the board around our BERT meetings and who is on those BERT teams at each building, as well as our District Emergency Response Team. So, we felt that that language was important to put in there. We did remove the language around the Safety and Security Committee because we did feel like that was covered through our BERT groups as well as our DIRTT team, and so that's the reason that you see the strike-throughs in that. And other than that, I think those were the biggest changes to the policy, but I welcome any questions if you have them.
And for those following along at home, BERT is Building.
Thank you.
Emergency Response Team.
Yep.
DIRTT is District Emergency Response Team.
Yes, it's a nice name, yeah.
Which is an excellent segue into my comment, is that I would recommend that we put, spell it out, because we don't necessarily know if someone's looking at it in conjunction with Policy 806. And I also wanted to recommend, I do, I don't know if this is actually part of our checklist for policies, but that maybe we add to our checklist that, to make sure that the first time any acronym is in a policy, that we have spelled out what it is.
I, I think we do have that in our...
Is it in our?
Yes, and I think it was my fault because I just copied the language from Policy 806.
Totally, totally fine, I just, that was my only comment. Totally, totally fine, I just, that was my only comment.
It's, it's there.
Any other questions on this policy? Okay, thank you for coming back.
Does anyone know if I have any more to present?
No, you're done, I think.
All right, thank you.
Oh, well, we, no, no, you're done, I think. Okay, and I did see Dr. Leland walk by. Oh, there she is, she's over there. Okay. And our last policy for discussion this evening is 902, use of school district facilities and equipment. So I'm going to invite up Dr. Anne Marie Leland to walk us through some of the changes in this policy. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, as this policy, I'm going to just pull this up, some of the changes, there were very few changes to this policy, and some of them were around the scheduling and cancellation changes. We updated some language per some direction from some policy committee members. And then we also, as, as approved by, sorry, I'm just a little tired, approved by last month board meeting, there's a three and a half percent overall fee increase. So some of the fees were a little higher, some of the fees were a little lower, it just depended upon what it was that, if it was renting out something or whatever room it was. So those are just some very small changes. Yeah, I think that's it.
And Dr. Leland, do I remember correctly, a lot of the changes came from the users of this policy saying that they needed a little bit more clarity around certain topics or just to clear up the process. So, great.
Yeah.
Board members, do you have any questions about this policy?
I have a quick question. I was wondering if, I appreciate the rate increases. I was wondering if, since we're entering into our BERT process, if there's any chance that these rates will be reconsidered again as part of the BERT process now that we know the amount that we are dealing with from a deficit perspective? And if so, if the approval of this policy should be delayed until the end of that poli, until the end of that policy, I'm sorry, the end of that process?
As we consider some of the, the changes and information received in terms of the BERT process, I would think that we would consider everything in terms of fees or revenue coming in, but at this time, we wanted to move this proposal forward with the three and a half percent.
And, these rates are related, and, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't even have to come over to say it, related to Fund Four.
Yes.
As opposed to our general fund.
Okay, no, we have, these are Fund One, in this, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, well, facility rental program, all of these measures are actually closed to the general fund, which is somewhat a typical school district.
So is the recommendation that these get approved since the budget, that these would be approved next month? So is the recommendation that we go ahead and approve these even though this could potentially, I mean, and I have no idea, I just, when we're looking at revenue, this is a revenue source.
I think there's an opportunity, if I may, I think there's an opportunity that as we go through the BERT process and get feedback and so on and so forth, there's no question that there could be a situation where if we came back in February to say, hey, we did find that there was a prioritization of maybe altering these fees instead of this number, the Finance Committee certainly would have an opportunity to provide its feedback to that process, to where that could be done. Would we need to actually have that done in a work session first to then be here, or does it have to be presented as a non-actionable item first before it could then be approved? If we were going to make changes other than what the rates are that are listed here?
I believe if changes came through the BERT process, so there was a recommendation that was brought as part of the list of recommendations to the board, the policy would be updated pursuant to any of those changes that the board ended up approving based on a recommendation.
Got it, thank you. Is it only, is it normally, I've not, excuse me, I've not normally seen in policy we actually put our rate structure in it. So I don't think I've paid attention to that if that's been the case. Is that the same the case when we talk about early childhood education and so on and so forth? Because that's a different sort of bucket? Right. So you're saying, so for a general one fund bucket, it then needs, okay, anyway, we get too complicated, but I got you. I like the thing about being pursuant to the process, Dr. Stanley, that if we updated it, it could then still roll. And so to, I think, Chair Ellenberg's concern, that if we were to go ahead and approve this, even if we're saying we approve it as it states today.
Sure.
The BERT process would allow us to update that without us having to completely come back and readdress the policy. Is that what I'm hearing?
It would, yes, we could. No.
Okay.
And what, oh, sorry. Would, if we approved next month, does the rate change become immediately effective as soon as it gets approved, or is there a start date?
It would immediately become effective.
Fiscal year, so this would start fiscal year.
Sorry, never mind.
You can ignore what I just said.
It would start July.
I thought it was immediate.
So July first.
I'm glad we just clarified that for everyone, including me.
Yep, that's okay. One of the things I just wanted to say, as I'm finally getting my words back, one of the things I wanted to say is, there's, is always, as we always do for any proposal and policy, we do research our contiguous districts, and the rates are really competitive with what we thought we could move forward, but we will always consider anything that the board recommends.
Are there any more questions on this policy? Thank you, Dr. Leland.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, so as we've been speaking about these, they will come to action in our February meeting. Thank you for the questions, the thoughtful questions, and the recommendations. Appreciate that. Great.
Thank you, Director Gable. We're going to move to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the Legislative Action Committee platform?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anything you'd like to state about the Legislative Action Committee platform, Director Aaron?
Nothing that I didn't cover earlier.
Are there any questions or comments on the Legislative Action Committee platform? We're now going to vote to approve the Legislative Action Committee platform. All those in favor of approving the Legislative Action Committee platform, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The Legislative Action Committee platform is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Secondary Course General Change Recommendations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was there a second?
Second, yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, too.
No, no, nope. I will now invite up Director of Teaching and Learning Jody DeSteen-Hubert, and Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning Bethany Van Oostel to present this to us.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Stanley, who stepped out, Chair Ellenberg, board directors. In front of us tonight for our action item, we have three sections to the new course proposals for the 24-25 school year for action right now. We were presenting these three proposals in three separate reports because we believe that English Language Arts and the Social Studies need a little bit of extra attention simply because they're in a curriculum review cycle. Each department is a different phase, at a different phase in this implementation review cycle. I will start with the, I will start by just talking quickly about the general recommendations, and then I will turn it over to Assistant Director Bethany Van Oostel to talk about both the Social Studies and the ELA. So to begin with the general course recommendations, we are titling at this because the report for the general courses follows the process that we have followed from year to year, working in collaboration with our secondary staff. We ask them to work with their administration, get approval on anything that is a new course that they would like to add, or a description that they would like to change in the course registration book, or a title that needs a little bit of adjusting. After they've worked with their administration and gotten approval and collaboration and partnership from administration, then they submit those recommendations or those proposals to us to organize and bring to the board. You'll see that all of the general course recommendations are at the high school, several are in the area of our Edina virtual pathway, and then there's just a couple of tweaks to course descriptions and titles. So at this time, are there any questions just about the general recommendations?
Are there questions for board members? No?
Okay. I'll turn it over to Bethany to talk quickly or briefly about ELA and Social Studies.
Yep, that's great, thank you. I am here on behalf of some amazing teachers who have been leading this process. I'm going to start with ELA, and then I'll move into ELA and break for questions, and then I'll do Social Studies if that works for you all. So I just want to say right up front that Tess Beadman has been the content lead in this project, and she's been working alongside Heidi Digner and Sarah Burgess. For the last three years, I've been meeting with them regularly, and they've been working through this process to really instill change in the ELA department. We have always defined excellence in Edina, and I want to say that their goals and their commitment to opening doors for students has been nothing short of astounding, and they've worked tirelessly to create the plan that you guys have had a chance to review. They really and truly have been so committed to the equity, ensuring that each student has options and has onramps and scaffolds and acceleration and enrichment, and even outside of the ability to potentially get a college transcript is in this proposal. So I won't go further into it because I trust that you've read the report and you've seen their presentation, which they worked really hard on, and you can kind of see all of the different phases. We're really specifically just to kind of confine it to Phase One because we're really looking right now to get the courses approved for Phase One, and Phase Two and Three is just kind of visionary at this point, where we're looking ahead to just kind of get a scope of where we're headed with that, but if we just focus on that Phase One piece. So with that, again, I just want to honor the teachers' work. They've been absolutely amazing and so dedicated to students in this process. So I will pause there for questions about, specifically about the English Language Arts.
Do board members have questions or comments about the English Language Arts recommendations? Director Gable?
Just so that the public is aware, we had an opportunity to see this in a work session in December, and the board had an opportunity to ask questions at that time and provide some feedback. It also has come through teaching and learning, and I think it's safe to say the board was really excited about the work that these, the English Language Arts Department had done, and the intentionality, the choice, and really making sure that we're living out our strategic plan of each and every student seeing themselves in this plan. And so I, too, as a board member, want to echo what you said about the people who have put together this plan, and there's a lot of gratitude for that. So, thank you.
And I would only add, even though I actually wasn't at that meeting, that I have never heard more positive things spoken about amongst board members than that presentation in my time on the board, that people were blown away by what was presented, how it was done, and what the effect, or the anticipated effect of the changes and the improvements that we're talking about making from that standpoint. So even though we don't have three of those colleagues who are here tonight, I think it's important to say that that's the impression I was left with, and my own analysis would concur with that.
That's awesome. Thank you. I will pass that along to them, too.
I wanted to point out a couple of things. One is that year one of this starts next year, correct? And I wanted to point out to the community that one of the things that the board had asked for was more options for students in ninth and 10th grade, without losing sight of making sure all students are able to succeed and be challenged. And I absolutely appreciate what you have come up with. I think it's easy to come up with two classes that are just labeled honors and not honors, and I think it's, can be easy to give harder books or more homework and call it an honors class, that really isn't actually meeting the needs and meeting what students need at any level. And the fact that you guys are offering multiple classes, not just two, but three classes at ninth grade, to meet the needs of those that need more support and also accelerate students that can work more independently, each student should be able to find themselves there. I really appreciate that. I also wanted to point out that I appreciate the intentional work that your team has added into this to identify students that can work at a higher level, because it takes, it takes work to identify kids, to pull them up, and I really appreciate that that's pulled out. So thank you. Thank your colleagues that worked on this. It's outstanding work, and I think it's really going to make a marked difference in our students and our language arts program at the high school, so thank you.
That's great, thank you so much. I will pass that on.
Can I ask a question? When, because this is a multi-year rollout, is this something that we at the board can expect like a year from now, after they've implemented this? Kind of a recap of like, these are the things we've learned, this is what we're seeing, and now as we move on to the next year, this is how this, because year two and three, obviously, is a shell at this point and will be filled in as we go, but is that something that we at the board can anticipate, getting kind of an update along the way?
I would offer, under the umbrella of the Comprehensive Literacy Plan, yes.
Okay, great.
I mean, I think that's regularly built in, but I would just check with you.
Yes, and I would say, under the process of course registration, because there will be new courses that need to go through the approval process, or 25-26, right, and that continuation for the three-year plan, and absolutely agree with Bethany on the Comprehensive Literacy Plan updates, we'll continue those.
Great, thank you.
I think we're ready for Social Studies.
Okay, we'll move into Social Studies. Again, I have to give honor and credit to the folks who really poured their hearts into this plan. So we had Eric Anderson and Claude Sigmund and Courtney Major, who were all part of this plan. Where this came from, Minnesota legislation put forth some changes this past summer, and so we were looking at some mandated changes from the state where we needed to realign some of our courses and shuffle some things around. And so as you read in the, in the report, that domino has some impact, and the team is, those of you who were at the board workshop, were able to hear their passion and excitement around the changes that they've put forth in terms of their vision. They spent a really, they really took an intense look, and they used the I-Rod process, and they went through many different options with their team, and this was the proposal that they really feel resonates the most. And when they were presenting, again, for those of you who were at the board workshop, you heard really and truly this is about the students, and what they believe that the students can benefit the most from when we look at the scope and sequence of the Social Studies classes. So I would just offer again that I will open for questions and take any feedback back to the team.
Do board members have questions or comments about the Social Studies course recommendations? Director Gable?
Can you remind me, because we had this discussion during the work session, with the reason that some of this is changing is because of state legislature.
Yes.
Guidelines, and that the current, or what we've got proposed here would actually change the number of credits. Can you speak a little bit to the process, or how those are going to kind of dovetail next to each other with the approval of this, but also we need to come back as a board and kind of look at that?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that, yes. We have had a preliminary conversation around leaning into what that would mean if we increase the graduation credits in our Social Studies offerings. We also have to consider other requirements that are coming from legislation, what would add, so we had a great initial conversation, and we will absolutely be having that conversation and updating the board over the next couple of months. Yeah, so there will be an impact to that add, but we feel very strongly that we had a good preliminary conversations around solutions and ways to go through the I-Rod process with that, and make sure we include all stakeholders and keep you updated as a board.
Just a quick comment, we talked about the, what the legislature approved, and for people that are watching, that are just going to look at our Social Studies pathway, the legislature approved the requiring government to be in the 11th or 12th grade year, as opposed to ninth grade, where it is now in our district. And so that is why you're seeing a re-engineering of the Social Studies pathway. I think people might see this and maybe have a reaction similar to mine, which was, could have been perceived as negative, because we like how things are. I wanted to reinforce to the public that. I wanted to reinforce to the public that, my one question for our Social Studies teachers was, what is in the best interest of our students? And they said to us that actually what they came up with was in the best interest of our students, because students will be getting the government and civics curriculum still. It will just be across both ninth grade year and twelfth grade year, and that as a district, we've been shortchanging students on geography, and that now, actually, they'll be getting a more robust civic social studies experience. And so, I just want to let the community know that, how much time and effort and thoughtfulness was put in this, and that students are not getting shortchanged out of anything, we're actually providing a more robust Social Studies experience, hence why there is a half a year more Social Studies graduation requirement being asked. So, I just wanted to point that out, so. Anything else? We will now vote to approve the 2024-2025 Secondary Course. I apologize, I wrote down the wrong thing here. General Change Recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The 2024-2025 Secondary Course General Change Recommendations are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last action item, do I have a motion to approve Policies 425, 429, 507, 532, and 621?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Gable?
All right, we're back. So, I can, can I just ask for a vote on all of these at once, as a slate, or do we need to have?
Just asking if people have questions about any of them.
Did any board members have any questions from last meeting when we discussed these?
I'd only comment that we have gone through, for our new board members who were not on the board at that time, they were discussed, there was opportunities for discussion, changes, recommendations, so on and so forth, and this is what the final thing was from, from our standpoint. So, moving forward, this is as advertised from last month.
Right, thank you for that. Any additional comments? Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving Policies 425, 429, 507, 532, and 629, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six-twenty-one, I think, is what it is, not six-twenty?
Did I say six-twenty-five?
Twenty-nine, I think, is what you said. Would you mind saying it one more time?
Let's do, let's do a redo. We will now vote to approve, all those in favor of approving Policies 425, 429, 507, 532, and 621, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 425, 429, 507, 532, and 621 are approved. That concludes our action items. Do we have any board leadership or committee updates? Any superintendent updates?
The only update that I will have is those BERT meetings that Mart was talking about a little bit earlier. The communication on those will be coming out shortly, so that community is well aware of the meetings and when they can attend, and there are several of them that they'll be able to attend.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. That concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you.